Roll call please, Mr. Teles.
Dr. Corleone?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Rolland?
Here.
Ms. Nobby? Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Anyone facing the mirror?
Here.
And raise your hand.
Here.
You both here?
I'm present.
Okay.
We're just delaying for a moment. It seems that the flag has walked away from the room. All right, so I guess we're moving a flag back into the room. Into this part of the room. And before we rise, before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to ask everyone in attendance this evening to remain standing for a moment of silence in honor and memory of Jackie Richel, a recent past board member who passed away on April 3rd. Thank you. Please rest. I would normally move, oh, I'm sorry, to the reading of the Jersey Open College meeting room.
The Jersey Open College meeting room was enacted to ensure the right of the public for advance notice to attend meetings at public bodies in which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provision of the Act, Montpelot Township Board of Education approved this meeting. Notice of the meeting has been posted at the Montpelot High School building, all Montpelot Public Schools, the Montpelot Public Libraries, the Montpelot Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, Montpelot Public School, White Rose Bank, and advertised.
Thank you, Jim. I'd normally move to the high school representatives, but I just wanted to take a few moments to talk about our dear friend and recent board member Jackie Richel who passed away, as I said very recently. It's with deep sadness that the Board of Education acknowledges the loss of Jackie. She fought bravely in a ferocious battle with disease. Jackie was a multi-term board member. She was a board member for seven years, from April of 2007 to December of 2014. During that time, she was a chair and member of various board committees, CIT, Policy, Curriculum, Communications. She was also a member and past president of the Valley View PTC, and it was our PTC. So Jackie came onto the board with a very unique and varied perspective. Not only was she an endearing mother of two children, but those children were children in the district. She had the involvement with the PTC, both as members and leadership. Her family owned the business. Her husband drew, and she owned the business as well. And she came to the board with such a unique vantage, point, and perspective, that she was one who had became, over the years, a very pragmatic, outside-the-box thinker. Over time, there were solutions to problems that others couldn't find, and it would be Jackie at her corner that would offer ideas and concepts. Sometimes it would be head-scratcher to those who were on the board, where we'd sit back and wonder where she was going. But so often Jackie knew. And when she left the board, she was dearly missed at that time. She was a special person who fought ardently and with strong conviction for what she believed was best for the students and for the district. She was genuine. She was real. She was inspirational. When she was in a room, everybody knew that she was there. And her enjoyment of life was contagious. It's so wonderful that we're sitting in this room, and I'll let others talk about that, but it's a warm feeling being in this room this evening. I feel like Jackie's here with us. She was highly respected, admired, and adored by the community, and her memory will live on eternally in this district. To her husband of 27 years, Drew, who delivered just an outstanding heartbreaking eulogy and funeral to her two wonderful children, Charles and Chelsea, who are both in their twenties and have been given such a great head sort of life by their mom and dad, we want you to know that our thoughts and prayers are with you, and we will miss your mother, Drew. I'm sure other board members would want to comment, does anyone have anything? Karen?
I do not. Is this on? Yes. And so, I hope the board and the public just fares with me, because Jackie was a dear friend. And I really want to take this opportunity to just share some memories of Jackie. It's my opportunity to pay tribute to a lost friend. So as you can imagine, the past few months, and especially the past nine days, for those of us who knew and loved her, have been very difficult. As Matt said, Jackie served on the board for six and a half years. She was a wonderful board member who cared deeply about all the district's children. She was our official baker and the voice of common sense. I admired her unfiltered style. She said what she meant, but always with care and respect. Jackie was our compass, our barometer. And I say with affection that when the board seemed to begin to spin out of control over this or that, Jackie would give us a collective slap on the back of the head and bring us back to focus. She understood what it took to be a good board member, and what an effective board looked like, and how it acted. I believe some of my colleagues on the board will remember the days when the board would get bogged down in minutia and discuss an issue until it felt like we were beating a dead horse. Well, one of my most hilarious memories of Jackie was the night in closed session when the board was off on one of those tangents, and out of nowhere, a small stuffed animal, a horse, came flying onto the table. We roared with laughter. That was Jackie's way of telling us to get back on track. She cared deeply about all the children of the district, but especially the vast majority in the middle, who Jackie felt would sometimes get lost in the shuffle. Jackie loved books and was an avid reader. The very room we're sitting in tonight, this wonderfully renovated media center, would not have been possible without Jackie's indomitable spirit. The project was spearheaded by two parents who came to the board with a very generous $10,000 donation. And for a while, we pondered what we could do with that amount of money. But Jackie broke through. She knew and said that the media center was in need of a far more substantial renovation than a $10,000 gift could buy. She urged the board to put money aside to do this project the right way. And listening to Jackie, as we always did, we began to set aside funds so the media center could be renovated, the way the students of this district deserved. Jackie was assuredly, unabashedly frank, but what I admired most about her was how wise she was. You would do well to listen carefully to any advice Jackie offered. But more than a valued and respected board colleague, more than a visionary and community leader, Jackie was my dear friend. We talked all the time about our families, our lives, our work, religion, politics, life in general, and of course, our children. Jackie was fiercely devoted and exceptionally proud of her two beautiful children, Chelsea and Charles. I can remember the year that Charles graduated, and his board members were given the privilege of handing our children their diplomas. Well, there was Jackie up on the stage, reaching up to give her towering son, Charles, a hug. That enduring look on her face was priceless. And of course, Chelsea, who shares her mother's logo books. Jackie would tell me stories of how she and Chelsea would hunker down on the couch and read side by side for hours. We shared sad times, the death of my father, the death of Jackie's mom, and then her dad. But we shared happy times, too. Dinners with too much wine, birthday parties, graduation parties, Fourth of July celebration. Jackie's front lawn had ringside seats for the fireworks display. And this past December, we shared the wedding of my daughter, and for as much pain Jackie was in. She told me she wouldn't miss Vanessa's wedding for anything. And now we're sharing the sad moment again. I will miss you, my friend. You know Jackie would always say goodbye with an "I love you." And so Jackie, until we meet again, I love you.
We have a number of students in the audience. And so I think what I'm going to say applies not only to Jackie, but something that I think all of you should heed as well, and that's that ultimately, the legacy you leave isn't going to be necessarily what you do to help yourself, it's going to be what you do to make the world a better place. I've been on this board now for 11 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. And there have been times, if you go back a number of years, that the board was not always united. And actually, we were, even at its worst, we were a lot better than a lot of other places, where it was against these three, against these two, and nothing gets done. And I've always said that Karen, during a time as board president, did a lot to make us a family, but if we were a family, I always felt that Jackie was our mother. The little things that may seem inconsequential, bringing the birthday cakes from people, the cards, the, as Karen said, the pats on the back, these are all things that contributed to our board being a functional board, being a unified board, and keeping us in the direction where instead of worrying about our own individual goals, we're worrying about what's best for the students. And Jackie was instrumental in that regard. Jackie was never board president, she was never board vice president, but she was always there. She was the conscience of the board. In a lot of respects, she was the glue that held us together, and a lot of it's something that you really wouldn't understand unless you were here. So I just leave with this thought that Jackie is very dearly missed, and I will always remember her as the water which helped to solidify this board and make us a better board, as well as being a wonderful friend, wonderful parent, and for this wonderful PTA parent. Jackie did it all. She'll be missed, and raised, that most people just don't understand or appreciate, but I'm telling you now, she's overcome.
High school representatives report, please.
So for sports, the boys' baseball team played home against Morris Knolls yesterday, and won with a score of seven and six, increasing their record to three and three. Girls across won on Friday against Westwood, increasing their record to one and four. Boys across played today and hoped to increase their record to two and four. Actually, they did, they won. Girls softball's doing well with a record of one and three, and hope to win on Wednesday against Blaine Hills. The first badminton tournament was last week at Montpelot Township, and it was an FBLA-sponsored event. They had the assistance of Coach Fisher, Coach DeBonta, and the phys ed department, and it was to raise money for FBLA sister charity, March of Dimes. In its first year, over two dozen students and teacher teams competed, raising over $500 for the cause.
Montpelot high school students competed at the Regional National History Day competition at Seaton Hall. Several of those students will advance to the state competition, which will take place on Saturday, 37th, at William Patterson University. Also, several artists from the high school have their work accepted to be displayed at the Black Wall Street Artists 20th Annual High School Expedition. The senior class is preparing for a fun spring of activities. The class has begun to sell tickets for senior breakfast, which will be held on May 27th at Crystal Plaza. This Friday, the high school will be hosting a day of silence, and during this nationwide event, students are given the opportunity to pledge one day of silence in order to represent the silencing effect of rape, bullying, harassment, and bullying have on students. And next week, Montpelot's Deca Chapter will be departing to compete at the national level, which will be held in Nashville, Tennessee. Not only will the students compete with other students from across the nation and the world, but will also be able to experience the culture and entertainment located in Nashville.
Thank you, Grace. Fantastic. Well done. Does anybody have any questions or comments? So everyone now has heard from colleges, and most people have made their decisions at this point. Can you believe that the senior prom graduation just around the corner?
Very strange.
Oh, good luck to side by side. This is a wonderful stage of life. Enjoy every day. Superintendent's report, Dr. Rolletar.
Okay. Just a couple of things. We have just recently concluded the third quarter of the school year, so I just wanted to give a brief update on our progress towards attaining the district goals for the year. Our first goal in the area of student learning, one of the primary focuses of this goal was our YDA School Culture and Climate Initiative. We are very well into that activity. Currently, the school-level teams are working with the survey data that was provided to them and developing their own action plans. It's been a very positive process for each of the buildings involved. We also completed the Special Education Program Review, and that information was actually factored into the budget in terms of the new class that we'll be implementing at the elementary ABA level. In terms of technology, that is also something that is moving along very well. We've increased our efforts in terms of using technology to communicate with the public, the implementation of monthly newsletters, and other subject-specific communications with parents. The district scheme committee has met, we're meeting again tomorrow morning. In terms of technology itself, Austin Thompson has done a phenomenal job of setting up a pilot program to help us identify the specific equipment. We did include in the budget money to replace smart boards and teacher laptops. It appears that we will not be replacing that with light equipment, but we do have a team of staff members that are piloting some alternate approaches in terms of that equipment, and we thank Austin for arranging that and gathering the information. Oral language, we have talked pretty extensively about the changes that will occur at the middle school next year with regard to oral language. I'm very proud of the changes, and I'm anxious of looking forward to seeing them operational next year. In terms of student success, we did conduct a parents' student success survey. That data we've gathered, I'll be sharing that specific data with the board, we'll also be including that in the April newsletter. That will kind of form a student success profile based on the input, the kinds of things that parents hold as important as our objectives for the educational programs. So of our four goals, I think with only a quarter left, I think we are in a very good position of attaining most, if not all, of what we set forward to do this year. So, you know, it's not my doing, it's really the team effort involving the administration, the teachers, to really accomplish a great amount of work with regard to those four goals this year. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that? Yeah?
Yes. Not a question. And I said it, I think I said this at one meeting already, but I want to say it again, because I think we have a different audience here, that I'm really, really happy and complimentary of the high school schedule during the parks. I think that was a great idea of the way you did it. It enables us to have minimal disruption in education, and it's just a great idea. Congratulations.
The kudos go to Mr. Sanford and his staff. They worked very hard to create that schedule with minimal disruption to the instructional process, and it's working very well. So thank you for calling that to everyone's attention. The other two things I did want to mention, we had talked at the last board meeting about having a budget presentation at each of the remaining meetings before the May 3rd public hearing on the budget. We made an administrative executive decision to not do a presentation tonight, because truly, there was no additional information to present at this point. The previous budget presentations are available on the district website. I would encourage people to avail themselves of that information. I know both Mr. Teles and I are certainly willing to answer any questions that members of the board might have about the budget. I anticipate that we will do another presentation on the budget, a little bit different slant on things, but, you know, we're just not making a specific presentation tonight. And the only other thing that I wanted to note, and if you came in through to the building near the auditorium, you may have heard the rehearsals for the Lazar play going on. They are presenting the live game Thursday and Friday night at 7:30. I would encourage folks, if you're looking for a wonderful activity, to certainly seek some tickets for that event. It promises to be a very wonderful production.
Thank you, Dr. Rolletar. Mr. Teles, Business Administrators report.
Can I just say something, Rolletar?
Absolutely.
Is it bad, is it going to be bad luck if we get found out, or a statewide geography field winner?
Oh, no. Well, we're hoping not to jinx it, but we are very, very proud to have a Lazar student. And we actually talked about honoring him tonight. He is a knock-your-sox-off person in terms of geography, so with crossed fingers, we are hoping that he will be very successful at the state competition, and we are looking to hopefully have him here for one of our May board meetings to be able to celebrate not only his, you know...
His statement?
Yes. But hopefully, you know, at the national level as well. So, but we are very, very proud of him, and I know that, you know, he's had some recognition in media, but we are just tremendously proud of him, and we will have him here.
Thank you.
Just wanted to brief the board on a few of the construction projects that are on this evening's agenda under Section K of the agenda of your agenda this evening. A number of projects that are finally being closed out, two of them actually, one of them, two of them actually, from heritage from previous year. Those will be the last two on the agenda, K dot 10 and K dot 11. And also, I just want to note a quick typo on those. The state 2015 is in the natural text of the resolution, and it should be 2014, so it's okay, I'll be reflecting that in a minute. And again, it's on K dot 10, K dot 11, it's the construction project closeout for the high school bleachers, the exterior bleachers, where we did the ADA accessible upgrades. And then we're also closing out the district-wide security film window project, which we were in a quarter or two years ago. And these two remaining projects from previous year that we're still working on, one is just a ton of closeouts on where we sit, Media Center. The last piece that has to happen is the furniture store, which still needs to be installed. The architects have been following up with them as well, Steve. There's still like two weeks away, we need new materials to be done. I anticipate once the door goes in, I should be able to close the project out very quickly, probably within a few more weeks. So at this point, we have pretty much all our punchwork done on these items. We have a few projects that are getting closer, as you can see, if you were looking at K dot eight, K dot nine is the high school auditoriums on the late improvement project. We're getting close there. I'm going to be, it's going to be a subject of our next financial facilities committee, and I'll, you know, I'm sure that might be, or I'm going to be speaking to that shortly. And then another project that we're also very close on closing out is the Lazar in Valley View, oil of the festival project. And that is...
Thank you. Any questions, Karen?
With what we're doing tonight? With what we're pulling tonight?
You are. Huh? You are.
What?
Yep.
What? I'll try it again. What we're drawing tonight, we're pulling, we still have, how many left from 14, 15, and 16?
Two projects.
Two projects left, and they should be completed by information, one of them definitely in the near future.
Yes. Thank you.
And moving on to committee reports, anybody have?
I don't, I don't have a committee report, but since I see two of my colleagues here about, Dr. Corleone, about Kane, maybe we can schedule something for the 20th or 27th or Wednesday's. They haven't had it making it in a while, so maybe you guys can check your schedules and then get back to me and/or Jim and/or Renee, and we'll schedule one of those evenings, five o'clock, if you can have it. Hell yeah.
April, Charlie?
I'm sorry?
April.
The 20th or 27th?
April, yeah.
April, yeah.
Very well.
Or July.
Okay. I'll get back to you on that, Charlie.
And I must say one thing, although it's not part of a report, at the Hall of Fame Dinner, Mike O'Brien gave, said some nice words about Jackie Richel also, roughly 100-plus people there. And I know he hadn't served with Jack yet, board member, but I know that the words Mike said were very appreciative by all of us. I did not say anything about Jackie tonight, because I think Karen, you, and Matt might did an excellent job, and it wasn't anything but it was a privilege serving with her. We had a lot of fun, and I remember when we ran together the first time, really experienced going around to the churches and stuff. We had a lot of fun, and seeing the family at the shiva, it was very sad, to say the least, but she'll remember, she's in my prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other committee reports?
I said the committee report, I said at the end of the report, must things.
I said the brief report, I said at the end of the report, Mustangs, that I'd share some information with you, so I'm just going to ask them. The banner and the policy, as it being proposed, and the children applying for the... Okay, this is for the topic I mentioned about the police sports, which they're trying to make an effort to get more students into police sports. I gave in my reports and information, explanation about this, this could be the, with their planning, proposing, putting the gym, this is big size, you see, championships, this is the T-shirt that people would potentially earn if you become a police sport athlete. So, I just wanted to share that with you. It was an interesting presentation that our athletic director gave recording this initiative. And since, since we are on the topic of Mustangs and all of this dovetails together, and you talked about Jackie, at the dinner the other night, I just want to read a little bit of the comments in the commemorative booklet from the induction the other night, and this goes with what Karen talked about with Jackie. The president said, "I would like to thank our indubites. The nine of you are the personification of Mustang pride, doctors, authors, community leaders. The alumni here tonight all serve as role models to current students at Monville Township High School and show the heights that they can achieve, starting with an excellent education at Monville. Your career paths demonstrate the selfless commitment to helping others and improving our community." And that's what, that's what we're talking about with Jackie, and that's what we're talking about with the people who were inducted the other night. And if I could just take a brief minute to tell you about some of these people. One of them actually is involved, probably a lot of you know that, around the world there are tens of millions slain, and her career path is to rescue, the actual rescue of women and children from slavery, and she's rescued tens of thousands of our fellow human beings from slavery around the world. We have doctors who work in helping the aging, who work in a number of fields, we have authors, some of them in our public library, which I have to bring to attention, our library director probably doesn't even know. So, it seems like it all fits together, Jackie, the Mustangs, the inductees into the hall of fame, and the fact that people work for the good of our society, and it's something that's still here at Monville Township High School. I have a few, and I can get more brochures just to pass around, if anybody, if you can keep these, if anybody wants them, about the people who were inducted. If you don't get one, I'll see how many are left, you know, in the box.
Thank you.
Maybe it would be appropriate to put the names of these seven, just the years they graduated, into the board minutes, because people read the board minutes, not a whole, some of them are quite extensive.
Charlie, you want me to read them into the minutes, or just have them?
No, I think you put Jim, that's a bookie condition, true assumption, so it's in the minutes in case people look at them, let them know what the recipients were. I think that would be nice.
Nice idea, Charlie. Thank you. Moving along, any PTC liaisons or reports?
I do have a delegate liaison from Morris County School Boards, which was held last week, and Charlie was there, thank you, Charlie.
I'm sorry?
I've said you were at Morris County School Board meeting.
School Boards.
Thank you.
Did you hear that?
Thanks, Charlie. So, it was supposed to be an advocacy meeting, but the assembly people, the men and women were sidelined because there was an unusual assembly voting session that evening. It's unusual to have a voting session in April. So, Ray Penny and Chris Jones improvised, and we talked about some of the non-education issues, like the bailout of Atlantic City, which was actually what was going on in the State Assembly at the moment, was causing the session. Senator Bucow came, however, he addressed the membership for a few minutes. Mr. Bruce Sisler, who's chief of staff for Assemblymen, Bucow also came, so we're thankful that they were able to make some time out of their busy evening. We had an update on the outreach that Morris County School Boards is embarking on, visiting all 40 school districts. They have all been visited but a few, so we feel that it has actually improved our participation and attendance at meetings. There is a legislative committee which met with Senator Bucow and Senator Panaccio, not as a great session, but as a matter of trying to form partnerships with our legislators and for us to act as resources to them. And Charlene Peterson, our field services rep, introduced us to a new online handbook, which is Boardmanship, which I got a copy hot off the press via email, and which I forwarded to the board.
Thank you for sending that around, Charlie.
Yeah, you're welcome. And it's, it's not just for new board members, it's a good refresher course for all of us. We did talk a little bit about the accountability regulations, which are sunsetting in November, and New Jersey School Boards has set up a task force to make recommendations. A survey was sent to various administrators and board presidents, so we look forward to their recommendations. One of their recommendations will be, in fact, to allow the superintendent salary cap to sunset, so I think we'll all be happy with that.
Did you manage, did I catch that?
Yeah. Karen, even though the legislators weren't there, I, I think the half hour to 40 minute we had, the cracker barrel session, if you will, was fantastic. We had two representatives from the school boards there, they brought us up to date, the political thing was happening, the strategy with Atlantic City, the strategy with the State Assembly President, Sweeney and Chauert, it was very interesting, and I'd rather have heard those people speak than the Assemblymen, because I'd rather get it from the accurate story from the school boards. Like, great job.
Charlie, I think you were saying what a lot of people were thinking that night.
I know.
Yeah, it was a really good program.
It was, it was great.
It's not, look, it happens.
I just have a question. I appreciate Karen sending us the book the other day. I'm not sure where he's going, but Ted Charlie said it would be a test, would it be open-ended or multiple choice? What is the...
Well, there's a lot of pictures for you, Mike.
Moving on, any PTC liaisons?
I attended the Woodmont PTA meeting, it's actually not at Jackie's Woodings, I got their legs, but they did have a few things we talked about. We talked about the newer language program, we talked about the sixth grade levels of Lazar, they had a few questions, and I think everything went well, and keeping my fingers crossed, everything goes okay at Woodmont now with that, with the fire.
Thank you, Mike.
I had some others, everybody. I went to the senior prom, if that's what it was, over at Lazar, very well attended, a lot of repeat people, we brought the busters in from Chelsea, I think. Everybody seemed to be having a good time, they came to the Afghanistan with some of the people much older than I was that were there, but it was really great. And then Karen mentioned, attended the school board center up in Mountain Lakes, and the Hall of Fame Dinner on Saturday night, Friday night, it was very well attended, I know Renee was here. It was a busy week, but it was well worth it, and I think that's what makes it all work well, to see these activities.
Thank you, Charlie. You're keeping busy, aren't you? You're keeping busy.
Oh, yeah, I got my list.
That's great, that's great, thank you.
Actually, I just wanted to say two things about the same Lazar senior prom, as there were also, the two things that struck me, one, I thought the kids were phenomenal. There were a bunch of eighth graders, I think they're all trying to outdo themselves to prove to Mrs. Carter how nice and mature they can be, just putting out their very best efforts, and it's just amazing, the maturity and how nice they were, the senior citizens just make everybody feel young again, and also compliments to Lazar, just how they performed, did a great job.
Any other PTC liaisons, additional reports? There's no negotiations ongoing, so no reports on that. Public participation, anybody have a comment for items on the agenda? Seeing as there is none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items I through O and the resolution to be read by the board attorney.
So, who?
Whereas the parents of student number 50226 requested a hearing before the Monville Township Board of Education in regard to Monville Township High School's harassment, intimidation, and bullying report number 10 dash 08, and whereas on April 12, 2016, a HIP hearing was held before the board, and whereas at that time, the parents have said students did attend a hearing and presented testimony on their behalf, and now therefore be resolved with the board after having considered all of the testimony and evidence presented to the board, hereby affirm to superintendent of schools' recommendation on harassment, intimidation, and bullying report number 10 dash 08, that this incident was not HIV, and be further resolved with the superintendent of schools as to provide written notification decision to the parents within five days.
Item I, minutes, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I had sent some changes in, and I don't see them here, maybe I have an old copy, but the last meeting, I brought up about five-year facility plan to look at, possibly looking at the problem that we're going to be encountering in the future regarding 2% cap, and I don't see it here unless I'm looking in the wrong minutes. And if they're not there, I'd like to table a minute until we get it done.
You know, they were done, they were definitely done. I suppose maybe the old copy, but the agenda's not here.
I have one, I have a ground comment, and the future budgets will become increasingly simple. Who's starting?
Page three.
Page one?
Very, very top of page three.
Oh, I didn't, I said at the end of the, okay, you put it here at fifth.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Good, Charlie?
Aye.
Okay, item J, administrative comments, questions? Moving on to L personnel, any comments or questions?
Just, just a comment, that kind of stems from L 230, and that is obviously a major post case, so I just, I trust the administration and the supervisor, we'll act post cases, try to find a replacement as soon as possible, because time is truly, truly running, so we're the new directors, we need to put together the staff, the score, choreography, and...
I can assure you that folks are already working very hard on that chat.
Thank you so much.
Can you really give a response to the question?
Item M, policy, and is no answer questions? Good, I'd like to roll call, please, Mr. Teves.
Dr. Corleone?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Mudra?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Pushed past.
Okay, all business?
Yeah, I, Jim, can you make sure that I'm registered for the Morris County School Board Center, because at the last meeting, I asked if you're registered, and for some reason, I was not, so I know there's one coming up on the 19th, and I think maybe you can do, stand for maybe the two for Mike, just make sure for all of them, that's for next year, so I get confirmation order, confirmation, write it down, and then I don't have to register by myself at the meeting.
Well, yeah, me too. I have to be there anyway, and I don't get automatically registered.
You don't.
No?
So, I'll do the same thing. I think you need it for headcount, stuff like that.
Yeah, they need it for meals.
Yeah, I called that, that was a, it was a problem.
Oh, no, that's all right, I'm registered.
Any other whole business or general board comments?
Just, Matt, as a quick follow-up to a note I brought up at the last meeting, an announcement, DAC, with open event on April 5th, I just want to say that everything went smoothly with a OVA forum hosted by the Morris County Prosecutors and the Monville Township Police Department, right here in the high school of Georgia. Very well attended, very informative event, and for Project Graduation, the MTHS School Rock will be holding a special concert on April 20th at 7:30, the MTHS event of the program.
April 20th at 7:30.
That's it.
Would agree, I do, thank you.
Hey, Matt, why don't I say, for our next finance committee meeting, can we look at that, what's in the minutes about the long-range facility, five-year plan, so we can add some things to talk about at the meeting? Okay? Thank you.
Matt?
Yes?
I just wanted to give a shout-out to Renee, I know it's probably going to embarrass her, but, yeah, thanks, but that won't stop me. You know, I looked at her, we can review from the March 28th to April 1st, and she's really taken on quite a few projects that are quite worthwhile, demographic study, one Monville, and she attended the Sustainable Practices Workshop with New Jersey School Boards, and plus, you know, she was working on the fire, which all the staff members who were involved in that issue and the cleanup and all that deserve kudos, but I just wanted to publicly give you a shout-out, Renee, I know you have your head down there, but, yeah.
Thank you.
I also wanted to give a shout-out and congratulations to our teachers, who are considered some of the best in a list compiled by niche.com. We ranked in the top 50, and I know that our school district and our board doesn't always, well, we don't put much stock in rankings and listings, but even though we don't, we always seem to come out on top, so congratulations to our teachers, who are some of the best in, in the country and in the state. And also, congratulations to the Monville Township High School, their music education program was honored for, well, they were honored for its commitment to music education.
Karen, I think that's actually a district-wide honor, I don't know if it's exclusive to the high school, I think it is.
Excellent. And so, congratulations then to all, all involved, that is a nice honor for us.
Thanks, Karen, and I just, I was asked once again about the, if anyone's going to be attending the Monville Baseball and Softball Association. Oh, okay, wonderful, I'll let...
Yeah, I, I know that.
All right, I'll let Chris pull in now, somehow he didn't, he wasn't aware of it, so, very well, it's great, just sit here.
So, originally, I wasn't going to go to the tournament, but I'm going to go to the softball.
Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you. Any other general board comments?
Yeah, just, Karen, you're absolutely right, I don't know how Renee gets to all these things. Are we still thinking that we'll have the one Monville, I know so much, you know, with the fire, I mean, you think we're still good on Monday with one Monville?
Yeah, absolutely, car, a regular meeting, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
In case you don't realize, Dr. Roltar prefers to do her job very quietly, silently, not have any compliments.
I think she's a twin.
Well, she's not going to get away.
I figured out, she's a twin, there's two of them, that's what it is.
Thanks, Mike.
Just want, Dr. Roltar, is there a timetable, that's when we feel Woodmont's going to be back to normal?
Yes, and, and thank you, because I had that little note that I wanted to give a brief update on that as well, and just skipped over it, so...
In case you don't realize, Dr. Roltar prefers to do her job very quietly, silently, not have any compliments.
I think she's a twin.
Well, she's not going to get away with it.
I figured, she's a twin, there's two of them, that's what it is.
Thanks, Mike.
Just, Dr. Roltar, is there a timetable, that's when we feel Woodmont's going to be back to normal?
Yes, and, and thank you, because I had that little note that I wanted to give a brief update on that as well, and just skipped over it, so we will have the students back tomorrow in a slightly different configuration, because the wing where the fire occurred, where the first and second grade students are located, is still being cleaned, but we will be able to use the downstairs portion of the building for kindergarten, and most of the rest of the students will be housed in the fourth and fifth grade wing. Our first grade students will be attending school at Hilldale for, let's say, Thursday and Friday. We did have the teachers in today, both Mr. Esposito and I, Ms. Widering, Mr. Toth, met with them this morning to kind of go over everything, they have the day to kind of plan, because some of them are a little bit different setting, they don't necessarily have all their regular classroom materials available to them, but in a true team spirit, they are ready to put things as, back to as normal as we can for the remainder of this week. We do believe that the cleaning process will be completed by Friday, which should enable us to get back to normalcy in Woodmont on next Monday.
They're supposed to do park testing this week, right?
Yes, so, the, well, the, the two good things about having to have canceled two days of school for the Woodmont students is, first, there are still enough days left in the calendar, we were over one eighty, so there's no need for Woodmont folks to make up those days, the second being park, and park, the state provides us a window to administer park, which is about four or five weeks long, it actually runs into May, so there is no immediate need for us to make up park either this week or actually next week. I think the plan that we've put together, Mr. Esposito discussed with the staff today, is that we would, we commence park testing Monday, April twenty-fifth, so they only have several days left of testing, so that they still are, you know, have plenty of time within the window to finish the testing, and then conduct any makeup sessions that might be necessary.
Do we have to postpone the testing at all the schools, or just?
No, no, everybody else continued on, and actually, that was what made the logistics a little bit more complicated, because the testing is still going on in certain parts of the district, so we did not want to disrupt that in terms of relocating students, but it's just Monville, they're on temporary hold in terms of finishing the park testing, and they'll finish beginning April twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roltar. Any other comments? I'd like to open the floor for public participation, anyone have any comments? Seeing as there is none, a motion to adjourn.
Someone say?
Thank you.